It's so lovely to see everyone. Thank you so much for being here. It is 7:02 and we will call this meeting to order. It's the March 19th meeting of the Altadena Town Council. It is also Women's History Month. As it is Women's History Month, we wanted to recognize a strong female community leader. Deb Halbersat and her husband John moved to Altadena in 1978. In 1989, Deb created Half City Productions, a digital video and multimedia company, with a client list that includes the County of Los Angeles, the OCTA, UCLA, and one-time Altadena resident Dennis Haysbert. Over the years, she teamed up with another amazing Altadena Deb, Debbie Swanson-Patrick, to form Deb Squared Photo, or D2. D2 is a company that specializes in portraiture, public relations, and events. D2 is a content coordinator, writing, and photography for Best Version Media's Altadena Neighbors Magazine. Because she's not busy enough with those two companies, Deb is also a volunteer on patrol for the Altadena LASD Station, citizen coordinator for Altadena Sheriff's Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, with whom she'll be here tonight, civilian leader ambassador for Altadena for the San Gabriel Pomona Valley Red Cross, committee member for the Altadena Map Your Neighborhood Association, a neighborhood watch captain, and a trainer of CERT volunteers from Sierra Madre to Crescenta Valley. Please help me welcome Deb to the podium to lead our pledge of allegiance.[129.66][129.66][applause]
Please all stand and face the flag. Cover your hearts. The flag is over there. We lost it. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Don't leave. Thanks.
Deb, now you have your very own Altadena pint glass. Okay, we are moving on to 1.2, roll call. Secretary Pat Sutherland.
Good evening, and ladies and gentlemen, please, thank you. Listen for your name and answer appropriately. Connor Tripola.
Present.
Victoria Knapp.
Present.
Nick Aronson.
Present.
Kim Yu.
Present.
Melissa Marona is absent. Dorothy Wong is excused. John Carmody is here.
Present.
Chris O'Malley.
Yeah, that's me.
Rob Bryce. Japhena Hall.
Present.
Alan Peck. Pat Sutherland is here. Reginald Wilkins.
Present.
Doug Cauliflower.
Here.
Diane Markison.
Here.
And Sylvia Vega.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Great. We will move to, oh my goodness! Oops. Give us just one second to see what happened there. You didn't know your own strength, Doug. Is that why you didn't want a little Debbie, Doug? Chris, thank you for doing that. That's okay. All right, while Chris is managing that, we are going to move to 1.3. We're going to approve the agenda. Councilmember Aronson.
Good evening, fellow council members and community members. There are agendas at the back of the room as well as public comment cards. The council welcomes input from the community on both agendized and non-agendized items. If you would like to make a public comment, please fill out the card in the back of the room and give it to a council member on either end of the tables here. There are rules regarding public comment that are put in place to provide time for all people responding and to conduct the meeting in an orderly, respectful, and equitable fashion. While the council does not respond to public comment during the meeting, if you would like a response, please include your contact information on the card. Public comments are limited to two minutes. Commenters are required to speak in a respectful and factual manner. These guidelines are in place to ensure everyone wishing to make a public comment has the time to do so and that we can conduct this meeting in an orderly fashion. Councilmembers, I should mention that the agenda has changed since it was sent out publicly. What you have in front of you is now the correct agenda. Public, it's the same for you on the back table. Those are now the correct agendas. But I'm going to make note of those changes for those listening in. The council executive committee met on Tuesday, March 12th, to set the agenda for tonight's meeting. The agenda was circulated on Thursday, March 14th. These are the following corrections and additions. Under community reports, again, this is already on yours, but we added item 4.3, Altadena Historical Society, a report given by Narmine Nassim. Under special presentations, item 5.1, the presentation will be Anula Fernandini. Under committee reports, we added item 6.2, Film Committee Report, given by Chair Reggie Wilson and Committee Member, Councilmember Kim Yu. I received no other corrections, requests, or changes. Are there any tonight? Seeing none, I move the agenda be approved with said changes. We have a second?
All in favor of approving as amended? Anyone abstaining? Great. The agenda is approved. Okay, moving on, officers' reports. I do just want to recognize that it is Women's History Month. There are more than a number of prominent and impactful women in the town of Altadena, some of whom are present here tonight. I wanted to acknowledge all of the women council members up here tonight. I also wanted to acknowledge the director of our library, Nikki Winslow, who's also here. I wish I had my glasses on. I could see everybody better. And certainly, there you are. And certainly, the five-person Board of Supervisors that governs LA County. So my report is short so that we can move on. We have two action items that are going to take a little bit of time. So we are going to move on to the recording secretary, Pat Sutherland.
Councilmembers, I sent the minutes for the February meeting to you a couple days ago. And I did receive a couple of actual corrections. They were, they were typos at the end of the minutes. I think I probably was getting a little tired at that particular moment. Otherwise, are there any other comments or additions, subtractions? In that case, I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
We have a motion. All in favor? Anyone abstaining? Anybody against? Okay, the motion carries. Moving on, Treasurers' Report. Treasurer Chris O'Malley.
Thank you, Chair. We begin the period starting February 1st, 2024, and ending February 29th, 2004. Leap year, very exciting. With a balance of $1,043.98. We got some money back from GoDaddy because we accidentally signed up for something we didn't mean to sign up for. So we got $665.95 back, including, that includes the $266 of cash that I finally got around to depositing. So we ended the period with $1,629.94 in the bank. As always, I would like to remind our neighbors that the Altadena Town Council is a volunteer organization. We're here to represent you to the Board of Supervisors. Catherine Barker just got reelected. Congratulations, if you're watching. If you could be so kind as to throw a couple bucks in here. It helps us buy materials and do our job so we don't have to pay for everything ourselves. I have, hold on. Where did I put my money? No, no, no. And if you just pass it through, and last person to have it, pass it over to Councilmember Reggie here. Make sure he puts some money in there. He always tries to pretend like he doesn't get it.
Thank you.
That concludes that report.
Great. Thank you so much. And now we're moving to 2.4. Instead of Dorothy Wong, you will handle correspondence.
That's me. Okay, so I'm just going to read the notes that she sent me. There's an ECODA meeting. I was supposed to verify the date, time, and location of that. When's the ECODA meeting?
March 26th.
March 26th. 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. Safe Streets meeting, the fourth Thursday of each month, at 7:00 p.m. via Zoom. The next meeting is on March 29th. There's a link to the meeting on the ATC website. LA County Parks and Spring Jubilee at Loma Alta Park is on Friday, March 22nd. And the Altadena Farmer, sorry, the Altadena Neighborhood Farmers Market is also at Farnsworth Park, March 28th. Spring Parks After Dark is up at Loma Alta Park on April 6th. And the Altadena Rotary Club 2024 Grants for Women Entrepreneurs. If there are any local women businesses that are interested and eligible, there should be a link up to that on our website soon. There's a Spring Jubilee in Charles S. Farnsworth Park on Thursday, March 28th, 2024. Bring the Family. There's live music, arts and crafts, egg hunts. There's a marionette puppeteer show, which is always a lot of fun. And there is a Caesar Chavez celebration up at the pickleball courts area at... Is it Farnsworth? Loma Alta? It doesn't say. But it's 6:00 to 8:00, March 21st. There's free Starbucks coffee, pastries, live music and entertainment. And that concludes Councilmember Wong's reports.
Thank you so much, Councilmember O'Malley. We are going to move into our public safety reports. I'd like to invite up our Captain Williams from the Altadena Sheriff's Station.
Good evening. So first, I'd like to start off with a few of our crime stats. Our aggravated assault stats, our violent crimes, are down 16% compared to last year around this time. And our property crimes overall are down 25% compared to last year at this time. There are a few things that I want to point out. We do have an increase in our robberies. It is significant on our part, but the number seems small. But it is significant when you think of the percentage. Last year around this time, there were six, no, I'm sorry, two robberies up to this point. And right now, we're at six. So we're doing what we can to do enforcement and different crime strategies to combat that. We, up to this point in March, we had zero. And we believe there was a crew that was going up and down this area, Crescenta Valley, Altadena, Temple City, Rosemead area, that was committing robberies. They were arrested. So we're hoping that we'll see that number decrease greatly based on that arrest. If not, we'll still do our daily enforcement. Another thing that's been a big problem countywide are burglaries, residential burglaries. They're up all countywide significantly, and Altadena's no exception. So around this time last year, we had six, and now we're at 14. So more than double. So we're going to start doing public service announcements for people to do, to, things for them to do to protect their property. And it's simple things like upgrading their camera system, surveillance system, alarm systems. Audible alarms tend to work greatly. Have a neighborhood watch group in the area or let your neighbors know when you... Maybe a way that, you know, you have to, you know, trust the people you live next to to do something like that. But neighborhood watch groups, they help out a lot. And neighbors tend to watch out for each other's houses. Also, you'd be surprised how many reports we read. And they'll say, "The point of entry was an unlocked door." So we're just reminding people to please secure their doors and their windows. Even try to put locks on the windows if you can. And then also, you know, some things can't be avoided. If you have valuables, you know, extreme valuables, please lock them away in a safe. And not just any safe. Hopefully, that safe can be bolted to the ground or something like that. That way whoever offends won't just pick up the whole safe and take it out. I am happy to say that our vehicle thefts are down 37%. And that's been a problem in Altadena for a very long time. We implemented some crime strategies and also did some public service announcements. So we hope that's a reason for the sharp decrease. We're going to keep those strategies up or try to move them, those strategies to different places that are different items that may be a problem, specifically burglaries. But those areas, those hiking trails, were always a problem area for us. And our patrol in those areas seemed to have brought those down. I know our petty thefts are down 45%. That's a very big decrease. So people are doing what they can to protect their property, so we appreciate that. Auto thefts are up slightly, 6%. And, but total, total crime overall, including property and aggravated assaults, is down 23% so far this year. Couple of events I want to bring to your attention. We have the Drug Take Back, our drop-off day. That's going to be April 27th, between 10:00 and 2:00. You can bring prescription, old prescription medication, no longer needed, no longer wanted, and just drop them off. We'll be working with the DEA on that event. Also, it's been a while since we had one, so we're going to do an open house. That's going to be in May. So I'll be talking about that more next month also. That's going to be May 4th, between 10:00 and 2:00. It's, like I said, it's been a while, so we're hoping it'll be a fun event for the community. All are welcome to attend. We're going to try to partner up with some of the other agencies, maybe the fire department. And we're working on a menu, so there will be food there, you know, free, free. Another thing I want to talk about is our SORTS system, Sheriff Online Reporting Tracking System. The sheriff wants us to really push this out. I have a flyer, and I'll leave it at the back there. I'll bring more if needed. People can file certain reports online instead of coming to the station or having deputies respond to them. It just makes it easier. If it meets the criteria, you can go online and go on your phone and request this report. A lot of people need it for, you know, like if they lose or their cell phones are stolen. Those are the things you could report. People need them for insurance purposes, things like that. Little minor vandalisms under 400 bucks, you can report that online. And just a few other things, you know, like theft under 950, that's petty theft, and theft from an unlocked vehicle. Like I said, we get a lot of reports of people breaking into, or opening up cars that are unlocked. That's another thing. If people on the hiking trails are parked on the streets, please remember to lock your vehicles, store those valuables away, keep them on your person if you're going into the store. All it takes is a minute or less for somebody to come and check your door to see if it's open, and they'll take in what's inside very quickly. Other than that, that's it. I'll open up for questions if I have any. But there's one thing I'd like to say. Now it's Baker to Vegas season. And anyone that doesn't know what Baker to Vegas is, it is a relay race of over 120 miles. Law enforcement agencies from all over the world participate in this race, where they'll meet in Baker and run all the way to Vegas, relay style. So Altadena has their team. I was just given a hat, fresh off the press. Just keep us in your thoughts while we're there. We're hoping to do a good job this year. And we're competing for a big mug that we use to drink water out of, you know?
Only water.
Yeah. And bragging rights. So we are teamed up with Crescenta Valley Station. So, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to questions in just a second. I have two of my own. One, with the residential burglaries, does there seem to be any pattern of them occurring during the day?
Yes.
And if the occupants are home?
Yes, so it's normally during the day, and the occupants are not home. More people are going back to work. They're not working from home anymore. And we're seeing burglaries increase during the daytime hours.
Okay, and my second question is, it relates to the Drug Take Back event. Does that include over-the-counter medications that are expired or no longer needed?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And what about things like, because somebody asked this question to me, like expired THC gummies or the like? Like pot gummies?
Yes, we'll take it, we'll take it all.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. So everyone?
One thing we do axe is hypodermic needles. We, we won't take those, but to be honest with you, we have a place where we can safely discard of those, so we wouldn't necessarily turn you away. But if you can refrain from bringing hypodermic needles to the event, that'd be great.
Is it going to be a drive-through event, too?
It is.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Well, look at that. Thank you so much. It was the hat. It was the hat.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, moving on to 3.2, California Highway Patrol Officer Keller.
Good evening, councilmembers, members of the community. I'm Officer Keller with the Altadena California Highway Patrol. It's going to be hard to follow up that presentation, Captain, but I'll try my best. My office is competing in the Baker Vegas as well, and we wish them the best of luck. Hope to see you guys there. Hopefully, we'll be in front. Okay. Back to business. Our traffic report for the month of February. We had a total of 25 traffic crashes reported, two of which were hit and run with unknown at-fault drivers. There was one driver arrested for under the influence, and a total of 14 parties injured out of those 25 crashes. Three of the crashes were involving pedestrians, two being in crosswalks, and one was a driver exiting his vehicle to do work. Not too much to report. We are still receiving complaints from the community, which we greatly appreciate. You can call or email if you have anything to report, whether it be speeding violations, abandoned vehicles, or just questions you have regarding your location. We'll be more than happy to help out and answer any questions. With this weather we're having here, please keep an eye on your tires. Make sure you have tread and replace those windshield wipers. Other than that, that's all I have for tonight, unless you have any questions.
I have one question that just went in this ear and out that ear, and it was related to the speed trailer. Is it deployed anywhere locally? Is it fixed? Is it deployable?
So we have one that has bad batteries. So that one's sitting at the office. The other one is with Public Works. They are waiting for approval to replace the batteries. They're kind of expensive, and they have to budget it. But that one will hopefully be out and deployed very soon. And I'll let you guys know where it is. We have been patrolling Altadena here quite often, monitoring the newer stop signs. And for the most part, it is being obeyed and obliged. There are a few that we have to stop and talk to, but they're learning the new traffic pattern. Our senior volunteers are going to be out during the week, most likely posted around the schools, observing traffic violations and documenting it so that we can enforce appropriately at the different locations, as well as looking for out-of-state plates and expired registrations. They'll report to us, and we'll make the appropriate actions.
Are there any other questions? And so it is easy for you as well this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good luck at Baker. Okay, moving on to LA County Fire, Maria Greiken.
Good evening. I will not be participating in Baker to Vegas. For the month of February, we had a total of 304 responses. 249 were medical calls, with 198 patients transported. Traffic collisions, we responded to nine of them, including two that were versus pedestrian, both of them at a slow rate of speed and crossing the street. And then one traffic collision into a structure on Roosevelt Avenue, and that was a woman who accidentally hit the gas and drove into her garage. So just went right into her garage. We had one fire, which was a vehicle fire on Alameda Street with no damages, or no reportable damages. And then we had two gas leaks, no damages there. And we had four instances of power lines down or arcing wires. That's going to change dramatically when you see the March report. So I'd like to go back to just having four. Yeah, so as I notified the council on March 14th, it was extremely windy in Altadena. I'm sure you all felt it. We didn't know what was going on. Starting at 6:30 in the morning, we just started, our two fire stations just started getting pummeled with responses. Chief Sprangle brought in a strike team, so we had five extra engines in the area and another battalion chief. And by 2:30 in the afternoon, we had responded to nearly 60 calls for service. And most of those, some were routine calls, but most of them were trees down, power lines down. We did have, and I'll report on it again next month, but we did have the three large pine trees that dropped onto a house. Luckily, nobody was home. The homeowner was out of town at the time. But neighbors contacted her, and Chief Sprangle did speak with her. That is it, unless there's any questions.
I do want to say thank you so much for the report that day. I also want to say thank you, even though he's not here, to David Ford from Southern California Edison. We were on the phone very early in the morning as it related to the power outages here. And I know that they worked very quickly as well, and also bringing in an additional team to get the power restored. And I know that people are still cleaning up and digging out today. So are there any other questions? Yes?
It's not a question. It's the same, partly the same thing that you just said, too. Thank you very much. I sent the message that you sent to us out to my census tract, and I probably got more reaction back than almost anything else, all saying thank you very much. You know, it's a big help just to know that y'all are out and about, so.
Yeah, and I had mentioned in the email that Chief Sprangle brought in a strike team of engines. What I forgot to tell you, and I just forgot again just now, is he also brought in camp crews. So we had camp crews in Altadena all day. So they were helping to clear roads of the trees and doing everything that they could to help alleviate some of the problems.
Any other questions for Maria? Okay, well, I wish you well in not participating. I would not be participating either. But good luck to everyone who is.
Thank you.
Okay. We are going to move on. Yes, I, no? To 3, no, I was just looking for this. We are moving on to 3.4, which is CERT. And I wanted to, we can call up Deb if you wanted to come, or if you want to sit there. You'll sit there, okay. March is American Red Cross Month, and I wanted to read a proclamation from the Town Council. During American Red Cross Month in March, we recognize the compassion of people in Altadena and reaffirm our commitment to take care of one another in times of crisis. This generous spirit is woven into the fabric of our community and advances the humanitarian legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, one of the most honored women in our country's history, who nobly dedicated herself to alleviating suffering. Today, kind-hearted individuals in our community exemplify Barton's commitment to Altidinas, as Altidinas step up, often with the help of the Altadena Town Council, to provide a beacon of hope for our neighbors in need. Through their voluntary and selfless contributions... Through their voluntary and selfless contributions, they make a life-saving difference in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food and comfort during disasters, providing critical blood donations for hospital patients, supporting military families, veterans and caregivers through the unique challenges of service, supporting neighborhoods, saving lives with first aid, CPR and other skills, or delivering aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of all those who lead with their hearts to serve people in need, and we ask everyone to join in this commitment to strengthen our community. Now, therefore, I, Victoria Knapp of the Altadena Town Council, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of Los Angeles County and our unincorporated town of Altadena, California, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of Altadena to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand this 19th day of March in the year of our Lord, 2024, in Altadena, California. Oh, you could, you could clap, it's fine. It's really for the Red Cross, yes. So thank you so much, Deb, for being here for that. And there's a signed copy for you here. And then I know you also have a CERT report.
A few words. Thank you, Chair Victoria Knapp, and the council for reading the Red Cross proclamation into your minutes. Our next CERT meeting is Wednesday, April 10th, 5:30, at the Altadena Community Center here. Recently, we've moved to quarterly meetings. CERT classes, I don't know, Maria, did she stay? Okay. Maria is having our closest next CERT meeting, I'm sorry, CERT training at Laconyata Flintridge. It starts on March 27th, lasts until May 15th. It's various nights and Saturdays. And if, excuse me?
He was the chair.
Oh, sorry, okay. And if you want to know about the training or go to the training, you can email me, but it's probably better to email Maria Greiken. And her email is maria.greiken@fire.lacounty.gov. fire.lacounty.gov. And thank you so much. I appreciate the council and everything you do for us.
We appreciate you more, Deb. Thank you so much for being here. Okay, we are going to move on to, we give that to them, to our community reports. Our first report is from our library director, Nikki Winslow.
We good? Okay. All right, good evening, council members, community members. Good to see everyone. I also want to say Happy Women's History Month and Happy March Madness to my fellow college basketball fanatics. Go Arizona, if you look closely, that's my earrings tonight. Just a quick reminder, we have our monthly Board of Trustees meeting that takes place on the fourth Monday this month. That will be this coming Monday, the 25th, at 5 o'clock. If you're not able to attend in person, we also stream on our YouTube channel, so check it out. And we always post our agenda package at least 72 hours in advance. We actually published it today, so if you're curious, you can go on the website and take a look at what we'll be covering. So building projects, I'm so excited to announce that we are finally starting the Bob Lucas Library Project. Yay! I know. Long time coming. So the last day Bob Lucas will be open to the public is Wednesday, April 10th. We're gonna be doing a farewell book sale to the building on Friday, April 12th, from 10:00 to 4:00, and Saturday, April 13th, from 10:00 to 2:00. I'm hoping to copycat off of Sierra Madre, come in, say goodbye, write on the walls, write on the shelves. We're gonna be renovating, so come in and say goodbye to Bob Lucas as you know it before we renovate. And we're gonna be doing our big Bob Lucas groundbreaking event on Thursday, April 18th, at 10:00 a.m. We'll be sending out a direct mailer to all households in Altadena, so hopefully we'll see you there. We're expecting that project to take about 12 months. So moving on to the main renovation, that will start after we complete the Bob Lucas Project, so we're anticipating about 14 or 15 months from now. We created some new promotional boards, which I brought with me tonight. They're in the back of the room. Feel free to check those out, which kind of highlights some of the things that we're gonna be doing at both library projects. We also created a one sheet that you can take home with you. I have those on the back table as well. In addition to that, we're also creating promotional videos with information about the projects. Most recently, we released one. It's about three minutes long about the history of the Bob Lucas Library. So if you don't know much about him or the fact that it was closed for 12 years and the history of the building, please visit our YouTube page and check that out. And we have a website. It's altadinallibrary.org/next-chapter, which we continuously update with information about the building projects, if you're curious. So poetry at the library. We're gonna be having our next event with our poet's laureate on April 7th, from 4:00 to 6:00. It's actually gonna be at Zorthian Ranch. At that event, they're gonna announce the next two poets laureate, which were recently selected. So that's a big surprise, and we'll be happy to announce them. It is a two-year appointment, so really excited to bring our next two poets on board. And the concluding event for our current two poets, who are Peter J. Harris and Carla Sammott, will take place Saturday, April 27th, at the Main Library. It's a program called Poetry and Cookies. It's been going on for over 20 years. And they're actually, we're publishing an anthology with the poetry that's been collected over these past two years. So hope to see you at that event. We're also gonna be celebrating Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month at the Altadena Libraries, Friday, May 3rd. And if you're asking why May, I only present every two months now, so I'm gonna be including some May programming ahead of our next presentation. So on May 3rd, at the Main Library in the community room, we're gonna have Kintsugi, the Art of Resilience Workshop. On Tuesday, May 7th, at 6 o'clock in the community room, we'll have Japanese Koto music with Kozu Matsumoto and Cal Arts Japanese Ensemble. And back by popular demand, we'll also have on Saturday, May 11th, in the Main Library parking lot, the Makoto Taiko Drum Performance, which are well-attended and very popular. So hopefully, we'll see you to celebrate API. So in terms of our art exhibit right now, in partnership with the Altadena Town Council, we created the Altadena Community Quilt. So we asked members of the public to come and work with our artist-in-residence Linda Illuminati over, I think about two months last summer. And all of the panels on that quilt were created by residents from all over the community. Former Chair of the Town Council Veronica Jones worked closely with, the person's name I'm not gonna remember, her first name's Hester, to sew the quilt together. The two of them spent months and months, hours every week, putting that together. It's currently on display in our community room, and I would highly recommend you come take a look. It's beautiful. In addition to that, we're gonna have an artist reception with Linda, oh, Hester Bell, there's her name, and Veronica Jones on Friday, April 5th, from 6:30 to 8:00 at the Main Library. I also wanted to say thank you to our art curation team, which is led by our staff member Mel Aldama, who continue to put together local artists' exhibitions for the community. Hopefully, we'll see you there. We continue our Second Saturday season. Our next concert will be April 13th at 7 o'clock with the Rayford Brothers. And then again, Saturday, May 11th, 7 o'clock with Stone Soul. If you've never been to Second Saturday, highly encourage you to come, very fun. So I'm sure you didn't know, but National Library Week is right around the corner. Oh, I think I skipped that one. So we're gonna be celebrating more than a week, actually, if you take a look. We're gonna be doing screenings of the documentary film Right to Read on both Thursday, April 4th and Tuesday, April 9th. Friday, April 12th, we're gonna have a mid-century modern architecture walking tour. I believe I'm part of that tour, so come see me as we talk about the building. And then on Saturday, April 13th, Millionaire's Row Historical Tour with our staff as well. I did bring, we have a trifold brochure in the back with information about all of the events taking place for National Library Week. In case you weren't aware, we had an early literacy fair back on March 2nd, where we relaunched 1,000 books before kindergarten. So the Early Literacy Initiative is really to focus on children ages 0 to 5, encouraging literacy skills and reading, and lots of other things that are important as kids are preparing to go to school. In addition to that, we updated our children's webpage on the website, and we have a ton of other resources, early literacy resources, including early equity kits, Love Every Play Kits, literacy kits, et cetera, et cetera. So if you know people with kids 0 to 5, please encourage them to come in. Really excited about launching all of this. And as usual, tons of programs. We actually just partnered with a local business called Petite Library. They have recruited volunteers to offer storytimes in Arabic, French, and Korean for our patrons. We also offer bilingual storytime in Spanish, as well as tons of other children's programs. In addition to that, Wednesday, March 20th, so this week, we're gonna offer a program called The Body's Midnight Community Read Through with Boston Court. This Thursday, in partnership with USC Pacific Asian Museum, we're gonna be offering a teen program that day at 4 o'clock. And again, as I mentioned, because I won't be back until May, I wanted to promote Saturday, March 30th. This is a very popular program called Shred Day. It starts at 9 o'clock. Come get in line early, because as soon as the truck is full, it's full, and they leave. And a lot of people like to get things shredded, so put that on your calendar. On Tuesday, April 16th, at 6:00, we're gonna be doing an indie author night. Again, well-attended, come meet some local authors, and they speak a little bit, read out of their books. Really great program. And then on Tuesday, April 30th, at 5:00, at the Main Library, we'll be doing a Dia Family Celebration and Storytime. I did want to thank our wonderful Altadena Library staff. As you can see, this is just a smidgen of all the programming that we do, for all the work that they do, offering programs to the public. And I hope to see you all at the Bob Lucas Groundbreaking on April 18th. Thank you.
Okay, before you go, how do you expect to, how do you expect hours or patronage at the Main Library to change as a result of the closure of Bob Lucas?
I don't, we're not planning to change hours.
Okay.
I do think it will be a little bit busier. It is our goal, over the course of the next year, we're moving the Bob Lucas staff to the Main Library, but to expand our footprint using the two mobile library units that we have, get the word out about the two library material vending machines that we have, in case you don't know about those. But what's really gonna be, I think, a big change is when we reopen Bob Lucas and we close the Main Library to renovate. We plan to have that library open seven days a week, many nights. So I think that's where we're gonna see a lot of volume and changes when Bob Lucas reopens. We're also right now pursuing having an alternate site at Loma Alta Park. So I'm in talks with LA County right now, so hopefully we'll have a second site. But I think the big change is gonna be in a year, when we renovate Main.
For sure. Does anyone else have any questions of Nikki? Yes, the shredding event is very popular, so.
Yeah, they're early.
Yes. All right, thank you so much. Good to see you. Thank you for being here. Okay, moving on to 4.2, the Chamber of Commerce. Is Judy here? I do not, did she confirm? Nope, she did. Okay, so Judy is not here, so we are going to move on. If she comes in and anybody notices, please let me know. 4.3, we are very happy to have the Altadena Historical Society here. Narmine Nassim is here to give us an update of the goings on with the Historical Society. Welcome, it's so good to see you.
Thank you so much, and good evening, council members. Good evening. I hope that you all had a good day so far. As was mentioned, I am a board member of the Altadena Historical Society. Thank you. On Thursday, April 4th, we're going to be presenting Hidden Histories, presentation of notable Altadena African Americans at the Altadena Senior Center at 1:00 p.m. On April, as Nikki just mentioned, April 7th to the 13th is National Library Week. So therefore, on the 12th, as Nikki mentioned, 9:30 to 10:30, we will be doing a talk. And on the 13th of April, Saturday, 9:30 to 10:30, we'll be doing a, we'll be leading a historical walk of Millionaire's Row, excuse me. And the tour will cover such houses as the Green House, Green Home, excuse me, and the Carriage House, the McNally House, and Camp Mariposa, and the, 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 theo? How do you pronounce that? Sophical, thank you so much, theosophical society. On June 19th, we will be doing the Juneteenth event, which will include the giving away of scholarships, the Ellen Garrison Clark Scholarships. The first week of April, we will be publishing the Altadena Historical Society newsletter. And then what is pending, and we're trying to get some dates for the following items. Historian Paul Ayers will be presenting, so we're still looking for the place that he'd like to present in. So we're still talking about it. We'll also be doing Japanese-American Hidden Histories. Date is to be arranged. And right this moment and ongoing, we are recruiting for board members and officers at the Altadena Historical Society. So I hope that you will pass on this information, and perhaps in the council, as well as friends of council members, that we are looking to fill positions that are, that the members, the officers are retiring from. And by the way, the talk, as well as the tour of Millionaire's Row will begin and end at the Altadena Public Library, the Main Library. Are there any questions that I might answer?
I just wanted to confirm with Councilmember Aronson, we're going to do this quarterly with the Historical Society? Great.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I just wanted to make sure we were confirmed that we're going to have you here quarterly.
Oh, good show.
That's great. And then the hours, are there hours that people can come?
Yes, on Mondays as well as Tuesdays, there are people there. Tuesdays, there are volunteers also, and you can see how the archives works. So we welcome your visits on Mondays as well as Tuesdays, and Fridays also.
Great. Any questions?
I hope that some of you will take us up on the talk, as well as the tour of Millionaire Row, because I think it'll be quite interesting.
Do you have an idea how long the walking tours will go? An hour?
An hour.
Okay, great.
The talk, as well as the walk.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I hope it's not raining.
Hopefully, that chased it away. Thank you so much for being here.
I thank you.
We appreciate you.
I wish you a good rest of the day.
Thank you. Okay, we are now moving on to our, oh, I see, the Chamber of Commerce, Judy Matthews is here. Thank you so much, Captain. Judy, come on up.
Please excuse my tardiness, but I was coming a distance, so. Hi.
Good to see you, Judy.
Good evening, Altadena Town Council and community, and happy first day of spring. Can pull out my pink, huh? Yeah. In the interest of time, which I know I have to be in the interest of time, the Chamber of, Altadena Chamber of Commerce, we are excited to see members expressing interest in chamber committees and opportunities. Member Emmanuel Gonzalez Ruiz of Merrill Lynch and co-presenter Bank of America are planning a webinar on educating our business owners on accessing capital and financial options. And that will be Thursday, April 11th, at 12:00 noon. Seventeen, hear what I'm saying here now. Seventeen San Gabel Valley Chambers collaborated to present monthly renewal webinar series for small businesses. That's once every month to the end of the year. It's online lunch and learn webinar series kicks off on Thursday of this week, March 21st, 12:00 noon to 1:00 p.m., with trends and challenges. Landscape of 2024 with Pasadena Chamber leading this first series, with leadership coach John Burt. Webinar series will cover a range of topics addressing current and anticipated challenges and opportunities in the business world. One seminar is offered each month at 12:00 noon and is open to- One seminar is offered each month at 12:00 noon and is open to the public. The group of chambers is most effective, is the most effective way to address the needs of our communities and businesses through shared efforts. Most chambers are experiencing, since the pandemic, that we must address a new way of gathering resources. For more information on confirmed list of series and other events, please visit the chamber website at altadinachamber.org. Look for May, something exciting with A Noise Within. They want to do a BIC event with the chambers. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Judy before she goes too far? We got, we're okay? Okay. Thanks, Judy, so good to see you. Okay, now we are moving on to our special presentation. We are going to hear from the county on sidewalk vending. Anula, you want to come up? And Connor, you've got the, the presentation. So Anula is with the Office of Small Business, Department of Economic Opportunity. Thank you so much.
Good evening, council members and community members. My name is Anna Lou Fernandini. I work for the Office of Small Business with Los Angeles County. And tonight, I would like to tell you a little bit of the brand-new ordinance that was approved by a board motion recently. So this is the sidewalk vending ordinance. So under this ordinance, sidewalk vendors are, are determined to be a person who possesses a valid sidewalk vending registration certificate to bend from a merchandise cart or a push cart, stand, display, pop-ups, pedal-driven carts, anything that is not motorized. It also includes people that sell merchandise on themselves. It will also, these, these vendors could be roaming, or they, or they could be stationary. Roaming vendors are the only ones allowed to be around residential areas. They are meant to continue to move. Residential areas are not supposed to have stationary sidewalk vendors, and that is going to be regulated by this ordinance. So this ordinance came about because in 2018, the state of California decriminalized sidewalk vending. This is thanks to SB 946, and in 2022, SB 972 made changes to the California Retail Food Code to allow for this, specifically for the food vendors to have a path to formalization. This ordinance will create a program for the unincorporated areas of LA County. This only applies to unincorporated areas because the law actually gave each jurisdiction the ability to develop their own programs and regulate these activities. Please be advised that according to state law, sidewalk vending cannot be prohibited unless it poses a risk to the health, the welfare, or the safety of the community. So it also establishes a sidewalk vending registration certificate that is going to be zero dollars for the first year and a hundred dollars from years two to five. It also implements operational procedures and regulations that includes distancing hours of operation, the type of cart and equipment that are required. It also sets off prohibitions and rules for waste disposal related to our sidewalks, related to our, related to our, the disposal that could end up in our ocean. So we're trying to avoid and we're trying to regulate that that doesn't happen. It provides our department, the Department of Economic Opportunity, the ability to regulate and oversee compliance. So we will be able to enforce this ordinance through fines and the suspension of revocation of this sidewalk vendor registration certificate. So we went to the board supervisors on the, on February 6th. It was adopted, but it becomes effective 180 days from that date. So that leads us into August. So we, at this point, yeah, thanks. So at this point, we are working on outreach and education, on bringing information to the existing sidewalk vendors about the new law and about the possible paths that they will have to get formalized. Let's see, so that's the formalization of sidewalk vending, unincorporated areas. And we are, according to the county's perspective, we are to use a curve-first approach. That is why we are starting with outreach and education already to try to teach these existing sidewalk vendors about the rules, about the possibility of getting formalized. And we are developing a couple of programs to help them with that. There is technical assistance through our office, the Office of Small Business. There is also a program that we are coming up with to allow, to provide them with a subsidy to lower the price of their public health permits in order to encourage formalization, encourage them to become part of the, part of this program. There will also, this type of organization, this type of support, allowed for us to provide this zero-dollar fee for the first year and a hundred dollars for the following four years for this registration certificate. We also, we also have a program that is planning to give them access to low-cost, low-cost or no-cost public health compliance cards. So there is, this is more information that is to come, and we're going to make sure we, we get this information to you guys so you can share them with the community. We will also be, we have, we have right now connections to legal assistance for these vendors in case they need it through a program that we already have running for small businesses in LA County. And it creates also single point of complaint resolution. So any issues related to sidewalk vending will be first managed by our office, the Office of Small Business within the Department of Economic Opportunity. And we will develop an approach to try to educate them and provide them with resources. And if all that fails, then we will have an interdepartmental way to address these issues by convening with departments that might have different authorities over these activities. So this is a timeline for our sidewalk vending. We introduced it to the board on January 30th. We went back for adoption or the second reading on February 6th. And then our marketing and outreach for this registration certificate starts this month, and the, and this will be effective, the enforcement portion of it becomes effective after 180 days around August of this year. Here are a couple of QR codes for you to get more information, our contact information as well. So the first one, we have some sidewalk vending FAQs, information about what, and very, very, very wide variety of questions that you can find. It could be answered there if you get also inquiries from the community. That's a good resource to, to share with them. Also, the second QR code has the ordinance as it was adopted. That is, everything else is our contact information. This is, we're a part of the Office of Small Business. That's our phone number, our email, whichever way you prefer to contact us. We, our office is in East LA, but obviously you don't have to go there, you can just give us a call, send us an email, and we'll be more than happy to assist you. And I believe that completes our presentation. Are there any questions that we could help you answer?
So will there be like a limit to the number of vendors, say, per block or per street, so that there's not an overabundance of, say, street vendors on any given area?
So that will be regulated by the distancing requirements. So our ordinance stipulates that they cannot be located where there are red zones marked on the ground, any type of markings on the ground. There's a red zone, a blue zone, a yellow zone, they cannot be close to that. So there needs to be a certain amount of distance between those zones. They can, they cannot be straight outside doors of businesses. They need to be away from electricity poles, manholes. So all of those, you know, trying to stay, keep the safety, that will, that will reduce the amount of vendors that are going to be able to be, to safely be vending at any one location.
Just have one, one more quick question. In terms of distance from, say, a restaurant or a place that sells food, will there be also, will that be managed as well?
That is only, yeah, the law only allows to manage that from the safety perspective. So they, they cannot be closer than 20 feet from any door from any business, regardless of the, the type of business. Absolutely.
Will you clear, I see you, Diane. Give me one second. Will you clarify that regardless of this ordinance, that the taco vendors that are serving meats that are being prepared from raw to cooked, those are not covered under this ordinance, correct?
That is correct. So that is part of the California Food Code. The California Food Code does not permit for this type of activity. So that, at this point, we are trying to see, we can help them find a path. But if there is, there is no, there are no changes on the way they function, unfortunately, there is really, they, they will not be, be allowed to vent. So that is, we're gonna, we're approaching many of them, we're going around different parts of unincorporated area, providing this outreach and education. And if we, after our efforts of outreach and education don't, don't work, then it's going to have to become an enforcement portion from our partners, from the other departments, which is the Department of Public Health.
Diane?
Yeah, all of the presentations that I've heard come from the county on this, every time we ask about how is all of this going to be enforced, we hear that you're partnering with other departments in the county and, you know, all of that. I'm just, I know those people are all overworked, but I would really like to know when we're going to get something in writing from you guys ahead of the actual implementation so that we know what the process is and who's going to do what, if that's possible.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, they didn't bring any prints, but maybe we can send you out some prints. The two QR codes, one of them has the key, the questions and answers, frequently asked questions about this ordinance. Then there's also the actual ordinance that tells you about the implementation and enforcement. We are indeed developing a program, and we will have more information sometime in July with the details on how this program is going to be enforced. For now, there is information.
Okay, yeah.
It's just a little broad, but it's going to get narrowed down in the next few months.
We're waiting for July. That's, that's going to be the meeting.
We'll make sure to get that to you guys.
Yeah, please, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
In regards to the taco vendors that have been a real trouble for the community up here, it's really the actual cart itself, right? It's not anything else to do with, that type of cart is not something that is legal in terms of how you see it with the county, in terms of the street vendors?
So in regards to the street vendors, the way many of this, many of these businesses are set up, it's not, it's not permissible, it's not allowed by public health. And once our ordinance gets enacted, that's also not allowed. So they would have to change the way they do business in order to, in order to become compliant and avoid any type of fees or penalties.
Do we know, well, if they're not legal, I mean, that cart is not legal just in itself with the cart, the penalty, I mean, what would that penalty be? Because it's not something that can be fixed.
Well, technically, the idea of the county is that some of these operations can evolve, right? They can evolve into producing food that can be permitted through the Department of Public Health. That is going to be one of the requirements for us to issue a sidewalk vending registration certificate. They need to first have their permits through the Department of Public Health. So that is one of the things. For us of right now, as I was saying before, we are doing outreach and talking to them, trying to work with them. If they refuse to work with us, the Department of Public Health does have enforcement abilities such as, such as, you know, taking their food away, even equipment, so there are other issues. We don't have criminal capacity enforcement, but the public, the Retail Food Code does have that ability. So that is going to go from there. From the Department of Public Health are going to be the enforcement that is, is going to be a little bit stronger because of the state law allows it.
One more question. In regards, you mentioned the, the waste and how it's disposed of. When they apply for that registration or that permit, do they have to, when they fill out, are they giving you their process of how they dispose the waste?
Yes, that, that's, that's absolutely correct. We're going to have to see their, so that will start from public health. When you apply for a public health, health permit, you need to provide them with information about your menu, how you produce your food, how you dispose of any type of waste. So that's part of public health. When they come to us, in order for us to issue the registration certificate from the county, they need to have those approvals from public health. And we're working in partnership with the Department of Public Works for any issues on the sidewalks related to waste, related to grease, and they are also going to be working, you know, in conjunction with us to provide education and enforcement if necessary to these vendors.
Do you plan additional community outreach meetings once we get further along? So once you understand what the process is for all of the things, including enforcement, maybe come back through? We had a pretty well-attended event earlier at the library, so I think it would be helpful as a way to get the information to the community.
Yeah, absolutely. We love the Altadena Library, and we definitely will be back. We, we try to come and it's, you know, we schedule District 5, we need to come to the Altadena Library, and, you know, we go to Lancaster as well, so District 5 is so large. But yes, absolutely, we will be back. So that, that, those webinars, I mean, those actual, there will be webinars and there will live, will be in-person presentations, including at the Altadena Library sometime in July. We will start sometime June, July with this type of outreach and education about this specific program and how it was formulated.
Okay, any other, go ahead, one more time?
I was on the call that day, I think there were a few of us on that call for the county. This operation that is throughout Altadena is not like a mom-and-pop shop. It is a bigger organization, and so I just wanted to go on the record, and from what we've heard from the neighbors, is that taking the food away isn't enough, because as soon as they, the food is gone, a truck shows up and the business continues. So I just wanted to make that note.
Thank you for, thank you for letting me know, we'll take it back.
Thank you so much for being here.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. We are moving into our two action items for the evening. These are community reports from land use, and we have two action items there. So I will turn it over to Chair Marcusson for her report and to begin the first of two presentations.
Yes, before we go forward with the CP, I did have a quick announcement from the project manager regarding Washington Boulevard and Altadena Drive project. Next week, our contractor will be exposing existing utilities to check for conflicts with the project work. Expect to see a backhoe and jackhammer and the potential loss of a parking space for an hour or two during the work. The exploratory work will occur on both Washington Boulevard and Altadena Drive and is currently scheduled to start Tuesday, March 26th, and be completed by Friday, March 29th. Verification of the location and depth of utilities will help the contract work to proceed smoothly when it begins in late May. So if you see holes being dug in the road, the project has not started, they're just trying to figure out where the utilities are so they don't wreck our ability to have electricity and stuff. Okay. We are going to go forward with the two projects that we have. The first item on the agenda is Prime Pizza, so I'll turn it over to Doug and Reggie.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm going to start with a overview of the project and invite Manny Diaz with FE Design to come up and lead that presentation. Manny and his firm are the owner's design team and consultant. Zach Fishman, the owner of Prime Pizza, unfortunately has scheduled conflict and was not able to be with us this evening. So Manny, you take it away.
I just wanted to welcome you here in person. All of our meetings have been virtual up until this point, so it's nice to see you here. And I also just wanted to say that Zach's conflict was a pizza expo in Vegas, and great things. No, I was, I told Zach I was going to. So good and great things are happening in Vegas right now.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, once again, Manny Diaz, FE Design, and the, I've been working with Zach and Prime Pizza on all their locations for, for, oh yeah, thank you. I've been working, Manny Diaz, FE Design and Consulting. We're a hospitality firm. We, we help restaurants and cafes and bakeries obtain permits from the Health Department, from building and safety, from the alcoholic beverage control, from zoning boards. Ninety-nine percent of our clients are like Prime Pizza. They're just restaurants, usually local owners who are looking to open up new businesses in Los Angeles. So we're happy to be working with Prime Pizza. Of course, you know Zach Fishman and his partner, James Starr, they're in Vegas, they have a pizza expo, so they're there. It's a legitimate excuse, I think. Otherwise, they would be here, and they were at, Zach was at the previous meetings with the, with the Land Use Committee. Real, real quick, just about Prime Pizza, they have six locations all throughout LA County. James and Zach are from LA, they're locals. So this is a local business that's expanding. They've been, you know, expanding, I think they opened up their first location around 10 years ago. So it's just great to see them grow. They have locations on Fairfax, on the west side, they have one in Burbank. Now they're, they have this location which opened up recently in Altadena. So what we're doing here for them is a conditionally used permit for beer and wine service. They have beer and wine approvals at some of their other locations, so it's just part of what their business model is. So it's just part of what their business model is. By no means do they sell anywhere near 50% of their revenue as beer and wine. It's really just something that they do to provide an amenity for people that come in with their kids. They might want to have a beer. They might want to come in and have a nice dinner. Really, the focus is the pizza and the focus is the food. The project site is on, it's 1900 North Allen. So it's at Allen and New York Drive. Just, it's north of Washington and in that area of Altadena. You can see there, that's the immediate neighborhood where they're located. And it used to be a bakery. I want to say, I forgot, it's not Baby Cakes, it was.
Patty Cakes.
Patty Cakes, for some reason. I have a client from New York who's Baby Cakes is their name. And I keep confusing Baby Cakes and Patty Cakes. But Patty Cakes was there for a long time. They operated the site. Prime Pizza got the lease a couple, you know, recently. And they've opened up, they made a few changes to the interior. For instance, there was, there wasn't an ADA accessible restroom inside. And so they built one out before they opened. And then they're using that outdoor dining area that Patty Cakes folks had put in prior to, during the pandemic. There's not a lot of room inside for seating. And so the, as you can see, there's a, most of it is back of house. They do have a small area in the front where there's a counter. Some folks could sit in there, but the majority of folks are sitting outside in that outdoor patio area. Here's some photographs so you can see what it looks like now. Photographs of pizza, photographs of the outside. You know, in terms of the beer and wine and the service, you know, Zach has been really proactive. The Land Use Committee did have a number of conditions and he's, he's fine with all of them. He agrees to abide by all of them. I know there were some concerns about parking for employees. And so he went to the schoolhouse across the street and he secured parking stalls there to be used in the evenings for his employees. So his employees didn't have to use the eight, 10 stalls that are on-site. You know, so he's been a really good, I feel he's been a really good community member that he has responded when folks have asked him to do things. And once again, that's because he's an LA local. All their businesses are in LA County. So that's really our presentation, just asking for the beer and wine service. Once again, it's really just as an amenity for the pizza service.
Okay, thank you, Manny. Does anybody have any questions for Manny? Anybody on the council? Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
I'm gonna, my partner on land use is Daniel Harlow. And between Daniel and myself, we canvass all the residences and businesses within a thousand-foot radius of the site. Four hundred thousand, four hundred plus knocks on doors, if you will. And I'm just gonna review, just a brief summary of the people we actually caught at home or in person. We had 25 of those people in support of the project, four that were not in support, and six with no opinion. In addition, we received phone calls, primarily emails from the, in response to the flyers that were left on doors or porches for those that were not home or did not answer their door. Of those emails received, we had 65 in support, 19 opposed, and two with no opinion. A copy of all those emails was distributed and shared with every member of the council. So they have those. The summary of feedback that we got, for those that were opposed or had concerns of the project, one was the location was too close to the schools. And we did contact Catherine Ashani of the Firehouse School and Julie Burbank at the Stratford School. And both were in support of the project and saw no issues and had no concerns with beer and wine being served at the restaurant. The other one was no public restroom, which as Manny just alluded to, has been since resolved. The restaurant has been built and is open. Third was, you know, could lead to increase in drunk driving. And while drunk driving is always a concern, we must expect Prime Pizza to follow all state and local laws for serving folks, including training of their teams on this. As with, as with any other local or county CUPs in other areas, we have added designated driver program to their, excuse me, to their list of conditions. There was, again, concerns about traffic and parking. And as Manny alluded, Zach has made arrangements with the school for some of the employee parking and instructed staff to park farther away from the restaurant to free up space for customers. We've instructed vendors out the blocks surrounding driveways. And I mentioned this Firehouse. And also, the alcohol sales are add-on to existing sales like other restaurants. Primary draw is the food. And then there's, there were some concerns about noise. On the flip side, some of the comments we received that were in favor was that Prime Pizza has revitalized the neighborhood. Prime Pizza has created new jobs in our community. And lastly, I can walk from my house and get a great meal in a pleasant setting. So that's an overview of our due diligence and what we found. And then if I, if there are any questions, I'll try and answer those. Otherwise, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion.
Yeah. This is for curiosity only, and I don't think I asked it before. Do we know what the percentage of takeout versus eating in there it happens to be?
I have no idea.
I've been a customer for the takeout, but I haven't eaten in there. So I'm just curious what the ratio was.
I have no idea. Manny, do you have any idea?
Unfortunately, I don't know. Although I do know because it is a pizza restaurant, they do, they have a robust takeout. So I would say it's probably, you know, in between 10 and 20%. I know they do really well. I think somewhere around there. But we can get an exact number for you when Zach is back from the expo.
Which is the 10%?
Oh, takeout. So I think probably 20% takeout, 10-20. But I know they do, he does say that they do a pretty good takeout menu. So I think that's probably a healthy percentage.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. In the matter of project number RP AP 2023005875, Prime Pizza is seeking a CUP to allow beer and wine sales at an existing restaurant location at 1900 Allen Avenue. I move that the Altadena County Council recommend that the Department of Regional Planning approve the CUP with the following conditions. Okay. Number one. The sale of alcoholic beverages shall be from nine, it'll be from 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM from Sunday through Thursday and 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. No alcohol should be served at the site beyond 10:00 PM on Sunday to Thursday and 11:00 PM on Friday and Saturday. Any unfinished serving already being consumed at the time shall be consumed within 60 minutes of the latest permitted time to serve alcohol at the site. Number two, security cameras shall be installed inside and outside the restaurant facing the outdoor dining area and surrounding area. Video footage shall be retained for at least one month and shall be made available to law enforcement upon request. Number three, a monitored security alarm shall be installed on the premises. Number four, the permittee shall not advertise the sale of alcoholic beverages on the exterior of any structure on the subject property, including windows, walls, fences, or similar structure. Number five, all regulations of the State of California prohibiting the sale of alcoholic beverages to minors shall be strictly enforced. Number six, the permittee shall post or otherwise provide telephone numbers of local law enforcement agencies and taxi cab companies at or near the cashier or similar public service area. Such telephone numbers shall be visible, by, and available to the general public. Number seven, there shall be no consumption of alcoholic beverages outside the designated area of the subject facility. The permittee shall instruct all designated employees who directly serve or are in the practice of selling alcoholic beverages regarding this restriction. Number eight, the permittee shall develop and implement a designated driver program, i.e. free soft drink or coffee to a designated driver of a group. The permittee shall submit the program to the Director of Planning for approval prior to the approval of this, of the CUP. All employees shall be trained on the program. Notice of such program shall be placed where easily visible by patrons inside the premises. Number nine, all servers of alcoholic beverages must be at least 18 years of age. Number 10, no dancing, or dance floor is authorized in or outside the premises. Number 11, there should be no music or other noise audible beyond the restaurant premises. The restaurant shall comply with all LA County noise ordinance provisions. Not less than 51% of the income from the business enterprise shall be derived from the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages. The business owner shall at all times maintain records which reflect separately the gross sales of food and gross sale of alcoholic beverages. Said records shall be available to Los Angeles County Department of Regional Planning, the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, or the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department on demand. Number 13, the permittee may hold happy hour drink specials. Specials are similar promotions from 3:00 PM to 7:00 PM, seven days a week, only in conjunction with food purchase. 14, food service shall be continuously provided during operating hours. 15, the service of alcohol in disposable cups will only occur in clear disposable cups. The licensee shall provide no lids or straws for clear disposable cups for alcohol service on-site. Number 16, the outdoor seating area shall be clearly defined and follow all ABC rules for outdoor areas. 17, a trash can shall be provided in the outdoor area and emptied regularly. Number 18, there shall be no display of alcoholic beverages from open refrigeration display cases. Any refrigerated display cases for alcoholic beverages must be enclosed. Number 19, there shall be no sales of alcohol from an ice tub. Champagne buckets are exempted for on-site consumption. 20, the permittee shall maintain all Los Angeles County permits and licenses in good standing for their business. Number 21, all employees who are directly serve or are in the practice of selling alcoholic beverages, including managers and security personnel, shall participate in the LEED, which stands for Licensed Education on Alcohol and Drugs Program provided by the State of California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control or a similar program such as STAR or other comparable State of California certified program. All new designated employees shall be required to attend. The licensee shall display a certificate or a plaque in a publicly accessible area of the establishment, such as a lobby, indicating they have participated in this program. Proof of completion of the facility's training program by employees, the licensee and all managers shall be provided to zoning enforcement within 90 days of the effective date of this conditional use permit and subsequently within 90 days of the higher date of all new employees and/or managers. 22, alcoholic beverages for on-site consumption shall be sold to customers only when food is ordered and consumed within the subject restaurant. Lastly, number 23, the following shall apply to any alcohol sales for off-site consumption. All sales for off-site consumption must be with food. Only beer and wine may be sold for off-site consumption. There shall be no wine, with the exception of wine coolers, sold in containers of less than 375 milliliters. Wine coolers shall not be sold in less than a four-pack quantities. No miniatures of any type may be sold. All beverages must be sold unopened in original manufacturer's containers. Alcohol sold for off-site consumption may not be consumed on-site. Staff may not open any alcohol sold for off-site consumption. And malt beverages, e.g. beer, ale, stout, and malt liquors shall not be sold in single bottle or containers less than 16 ounces or greater than 750 milliliters or 25.4 ounces. The permittee shall post signs on the coolers and cashier station stating that the selling of single bottles or containers of malt beverages less than 16 ounces or greater than 750 milliliters or 25.4 ounces is prohibited. Notwithstanding this condition, malt beverages in single bottles or containers less than 16 ounces or greater than 750 milliliters or 25.4 ounces may be sold in manufacturers' prepackaged multi-unit quantities, such as a six-pack or 12-ounce bottles or containers or a three-pack of 24-ounce bottles or containers.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
So I just wanted to take a quick minute for those that may think that we're going overboard with conditions here. The point of all of this is to make sure that it's a restaurant that sells some alcohol and not a bar that sells some pizza, right? So what we're, everything that we listed was to ensure that it is just a restaurant that sells alcohol for people to drink when they're having their pizza. Do we have any public comment? For this project?
No.
Okay. So does anybody have any other questions or comments, discussion? Then I think we can take a vote, Victoria.
Seeing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of recommending approval with the conditions as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Who was unanimous, the motion carries. We'll get a letter down to Regional Planning. And I talked to Diane and she'll work with you on that, too.
Yeah.
Great, thank you so much, Doug. And thank you and Daniel for all the work on this. And thank you to Zach, too, for coming to town and to you, Manny, too. It was a long process.
Yeah. So now we have our project Mia Restaurant, which is another alcohol CUP, which is Victoria and Connor.
Do we have a presentation on that that he needs to advance the slides on? Say it again, yeah? Again, okay.
Okay, here we go.
Okay, we should have, is Matthew here?
No, Manny's gonna take over.
Oh, Manny, you're doing it again. Well, welcome back. Everyone knows who to call.
Yeah, right?
Please call Manny.
Great. So once again, Manny Diaz, FE Design, representing this project, too. We actually have the owner, David Tuisart, he's here to say hi and answer any questions that I might not have answers to. But it's a very similar application to Prime Pizza, although instead of pizza, David is selling Thai food. So David, just to say a little bit, he's been in the restaurant industry for, God, too long. He has restaurants all over town as well, just like the Prime Pizza folks. He operates other locations that have ABC licenses, beer and wine licenses in Silver Lake and other places. And so just another experienced operator who's opening up another location that's here in Altadena. Oh, and an Altadena resident as well. So a local, he can walk to work. So here's just a copy of the floor plan. So originally, it was the, if you look at the top site plan, just that very first, that upper unit was the original unit that he was moving into. But he got the opportunity after taking possession to move into the unit downstairs and, or downstairs, just adjacent to that and have a little bit more back of house and some additional seating. So it was an expansion from the original submittal that we submitted to the county. There's another, another floor plan you can just see. It's a little bit clearer, you know, front of house, back of house, you know, 60, 40 back of house, 40% front of house, kind of typical for restaurants. And just some elevations. Is it, that was the only one in there? Okay. Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, so the, it was an existing restaurant. So that's, I would just say, this isn't a new restaurant application. It's an existing restaurant that David took over, remodeled, and adding beer and wine service. I think, you know, there is a few parking stalls in the back that are dedicated for them. And then there's another parking structure used by the adjacent businesses that folks, you know, use. Sometimes a lot of folks walk and a lot of folks will park on the street. It hasn't really been too much of an issue. Customers, there's a little back patio area, if you've been there, that customers don't utilize. It's really just for staff to take breaks. So there's no customer use in the back in the parking lot. So that is it. And you know, David's here, if you guys have any questions. So, that is it, and you know, David's here, if you guys have any questions, and yeah, happy to answer them if you do.
David, it's good, it's good to see you and meet you in person. I'm Victoria Knapp. We've had communication. Your restaurant is in Connor and my Census Track. I have a couple of questions. One, is the interior space, the expanded exterior, interior space open now?
No, not at the moment.
Not yet?
In process, yeah.
Okay. Is any of the interior space open?
Yes.
The original?
Yeah, the original front portion of the restaurant is available for indoor dining.
Okay. And then, are you also going to apply for a sidewalk dining permit?
Yes, that's also currently in process.
That's in process? Okay, great. Are there any other questions before we get into our motion and our conditions? Okay, great. All right, thanks so much, David. Thanks, Manny. Go ahead, Connor.
All right. Mia, Thai Restaurant is located at 2470 and is expanded to 2464 North Lake Avenue. What? Closer? Oh. Known in Regional Planning by Project A.B.C. 2470, project number PRJ 2023 000269, and under, filed under RPAP 2021 4541. You've already heard from David. David, congratulations, and I'd say welcome to the neighborhood, but you're a resident, so that's great, and thank you, Manny, for all of that. I want to say thank you to Nick Arndzen, Land Use Member, Don McCormick, and Pat Sutherland for helping us canvas four hundred and thirty-two addresses within a thousand-foot radius of the location. And whenever we went there, we left a flyer. If we weren't able to speak to somebody, we did speak to sixty-three residents in person, as well as business owners around the area. Fifty-two were in favor, one was opposed, and ten were neutral. Some of the comments were, "Go ahead, we're a community, let's do it. We're good, we want this, we're very excited, this is great for Altadena, happy to have more local restaurants, totally for it," and strong support. And what was the one? Yeah, rave reviews. There's some sensitive uses around the area, St. Mark's Sahag Mesro Armenian School, Meher? Mayor? Mayor? Montessori, and the Rayuela School. All of them were reached out to and had no opposition to the project. And so, with that, you want to hear a motion? All right.
I have no additional public comment, by the way.
I need three devices for this project. In the matter of Project 2023 000269, RPAP 2021 4541, CUP approval for the sale of wine and beer at 2470 North Lake Avenue. I move that the Altadena Town Council recommend by written notice to the L.A. County Department of Regional Planning the approval of Mia Restaurant's conditional use permit for the sale of beer and wine with the following conditions. The sale of beer and wine shall be from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. from Sunday to Thursday, and 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday. No alcohol shall be served at the site beyond 10:00 p.m. from Sunday to Thursday and 11:00 p.m. on Friday and Saturday. Any unfinished serving already being consumed at the time shall be consumed within sixty minutes of the latest permitted time to serve alcohol at the site. Security cameras shall, number two, security cameras shall be installed inside and outside of the restaurant facing the outdoor dining and surrounding area. Video footage shall be retained for at least one month and shall be made available to law enforcement upon request. Three, all regulations of the State of California prohibiting the sale of alcoholic beverages to minors shall be strictly enforced. Number four, the permittees shall post or otherwise provide telephone numbers of local law enforcement agencies and taxicab companies at or near the cashier or similar public service area. Such telephone numbers shall be visible and available to the general public. Five, there shall be no consumption of alcoholic beverages outside the designated area of the subject facility. The permittees shall instruct all designated employees who directly serve or are in the practice of selling alcoholic beverages regarding this restriction. Six, the permittees shall develop and implement a designated driver program, i.e. a free soft drink or coffee, to the designated driver of a group. The permittees shall submit the program to the director of the, of planning for approval prior to the approval of the CUP. All employees shall be trained on the program, and notice of such a program shall be placed where patrons can easily see it inside the premises. All servers of alcoholic beverages must be at least eighteen years of age. Eight, no music or other noise shall be audible beyond the restaurant premises. The restaurant will comply with all L.A. County Noise Ordinance provisions. Nine, not less than fifty-one percent of the business enterprise's income shall be derived from the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages. The business owner shall at all times maintain the records that reflect separately the gross sale of food and the gross sale of alcoholic beverages. Said records shall be available to the Los Angeles County Department of Regional Planning, the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, or the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department on demand. Number ten, food service shall be continuously provided during operating hours. Eleven, no service of alcoholic drinks will be done in disposable cups of any type. Twelve, outdoor dining areas shall be clearly defined and conform to A.B.C. rules. The permittees shall obtain any permits and approvals required by L.A. County to operate in outdoor dining area and maintain all applicable design standards, guidelines, and permit conditions. Thirteen, sidewalk access will remain clear and maintain a five-foot minimum pedestrian pathway pursuant to fire code and allow, fire code allowance and ADA requirements. Fourteen, a trash can shall be provided in the outdoor area and emptied regularly. Fifteen, all employees who directly serve or are in the practice of selling alcoholic beverages, including managers and security personnel, shall participate in the LEED licensee education on alcohol and drugs program provided by the State of California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control or a similar program such as STAR standardized training for alcohol retailers or another comparable State of California certified program. All new designated employees shall be required to attend. The licensee shall display a certificate or a plaque in a publicly accessible area of the establishment such as the lobby indicating they have participated in this program. Proof of completion of the facility's training program by employees, the licensee, and all managers shall be provided to the zoning enforcement within ninety days of the effective date of this conditional use permit, and subsequently within ninety days of the higher date of all new employees and/or managers. Sixteen, alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption may only be sold with a bona fide meal. Seventeen, alcoholic beverages sold under the off-sale privilege shall fully comply with the relevant Business and Professions Code sections and all applicable A.B.C. guidelines. Alcoholic sales for off-site consumption must conform to the following. Only beer and wine may be sold for off-site consumption. There shall be no wine sold in containers of less than one hundred and eighty milliliters. No miniatures of any type may be sold. Alcohol sold for off-site consumption may not be used on, consumed onsite. Off-sale beverages shall be in the original manufacturer's sealed container, and staff shall not open any alcohol sold for off-site consumption. That concludes our conditions and our motion.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Any comments? You've heard, most of you have heard this before. Okay, so we're...
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
In regards to, unless I missed it, was there anything about security cameras being installed?
Condition number two, yep. The same as Prime.
Okay, number two. I saw it on Prime, but I didn't remember hearing it through you, so I apologize.
Okay, anything else? Okay, we are going to take a vote. All in favor of recommending approval for this CUP, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Great, that carries unanimously, and we will prepare a letter for Regional Planning. I wanted to thank Connor specifically for his leadership on this. It was a very long and detailed process. Wanted to thank Manny for being here for both presentations and David for being here in person. It's nice to meet you. We're so happy that you're in town. We're glad that you live here. We're glad that Zach lives here, too. So, that concludes our land use agenda items, and we will move on now to our committee report from the filming committee.
Reggie Wilkins, I'm excited to support the reformation of the film committee, along with my colleague, Councilmember Yu. Fortunately, the council and other stakeholders have given us a wealth of information from previous, from committee efforts, so we'll be able to hit the ground running, boom, and the table. As an economist, I understand the importance of this industry for California and for the county. It's a job of this committee to ensure that these benefits also reach Altadena at large. We invite residents to reach out to us by email if they have any issues you want us to address relatively soon. We will begin our planning meetings very soon and look forward to providing our first real report next month.
Thank you, Reggie, and for everyone that's watching or in the room, you can find either of their, or both of their emails on the Altadena Town Council website, altedinatowncouncil.org. Okay, moving on, we are moving to general public comment. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Arndzen.
I do want to remind everybody present, if you do want to make public comment, please fill out a card in the back. We're going to start with two that are both on the same subject. I'll bring up Dr. Vicky Greenberg first and Baljeet Sahi, if you can be on the sidelines to step in. You have two minutes when you begin to speak. Dr. Greenberg.
Hi, I'm Dr. Greenberg. I just wanted to let you know about the, not getting any announcements regarding this agave development to our community. For example, we usually get flyers for filming. We didn't get anything, and this is a major project where people are going to be living in our community. Dr. Al Malouf, before he died, he contacted me, wanted me to inform our community what was going on. So, I'm like his voice right now. He told me to tell our community that they took land away from him, and now his office is less valuable for his next generation, and he felt very sad about that. He also told me that they forced this project to be approved fast and any way they can and not to tell anyone. This project, they say, is for quote-unquote "special needs." Special needs can include criminals, pedophiles, and perverts. I just wanted to let you know, last weekend, I was invited to a shul in Santa Monica, and I was really shocked at what I saw. The promenade, which I grew up with, which was all full of people and all, was a ghost town. There was no one there, except mainly unhoused migrants. There were a lot of boarded-up businesses and closed businesses. Many unhoused properties and halfway houses surrounded this area as well. While I was walking, an unhoused migrant assaulted me for no reason at all by hitting me hard in the arm. There was no police around. This is not safe for anyone, especially children. Congregates in the shul stated that they lived in Santa Monica for many decades and always had homeless, but the last four years, the homeless are much different and more dangerous. They stated these migrants are not from here, they are from other countries who have crossed our open border. Some of these migrants are from prisons, psych wards, gang members, rapists, and terrorists from other countries. Do you want this in Altadena? It'll soon be in, on your doorstep. This is a safe environment, that's the reason why I love Altadena. I moved here. This is, this is a lovely community.
Thank you, ma'am, that's time. Baljeet Sahi?
Good evening, councilmembers and community members. I have significant concerns about the same project Dr. Greenberg is talking about. The housing project at 2052 Lake Avenue in Altadena, opposite my business, as a member of our community, I seek clarity on its impact. While I support addressing housing needs, we must consider how this project affects local businesses, residents, and schools. I inquire about measures to minimize negative effects. I want to know the demographics and socioeconomic profiles of residents. We need assurance that this project aligns with our community and doesn't constrain resources. I worry about impact on local businesses, including mine and property value safety, especially for nearby schoolchildren, is crucial. We must consider broader societal implications like crime and tension. Urban planning should balance compassion with community well-being. I request detailed information on demographics and needs of residents, impact assessment on businesses, property values, and safety, engagement with stakeholders, strategies for addressing challenges. Transperate dialogue with stakeholders is essential. I have to address two things. One, the EAH Housing Claim Grant Application lacks consistency. The representative from EAH Housing failed to substantiate their claim that they had already applied for a grant from Los Angeles County Department Housing Development Authority around September 9, 2021, for fifty-four units designated for special needs. The application deadline for this grant was October 27, 2021, and they appropriately, they purportedly secured it by surpassing four other competitors. However, discrepancies arise when examining their application to the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee for the reservation of federal or federal state low-income housing tax, especially under the section pertaining to tenant population data. They indicated an anticipation of fifty-seven units for homeless population. And here, the member did not say that. He should have said it. Diane, on your question, he said that he was forced by county. No, they had already applied.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Baljeet. Sarah Escarate?
Hi, ladies and gentlemen of Town Council, my name is Sarah Escarate, the founder and producing artistic director for Altadena Music Theater. While newly established in 2021, Altadena Music Theater is a proven track record of delivering outstanding theatrical productions. We are committed to fostering cultural enrichment and community engagement through the performing arts. Our vision is to transform the Charles Farnsworth Amphitheater into a hub of artistic excellence, providing the community with accessible and captivating musical theater experiences. I am here today to make the statement on behalf of our team of artists, as we have had a challenging time working with the Parks Partner Division, who continue to deny us as a core partner for the space. I wanted to make sure that the community was aware that we were offering the community free musical theater education for our youth this summer, and free tickets for our youth this fall, in hopes that they would allow us to partner as a core partner and use the amphitheater without the extraordinarily high fees they put upon us. That offering was rejected, and they will only allow us to use the space as a full fee for rehearsals and a small percentage discount for the performances themselves. As a 501(c)(3) organization run by locals, we understand there are costs involved with using the space. However, the fees for an extremely low infrastructure theater are incredibly high, and we are at risk of not being able to continue with our program without less of this financial burden. So, we felt compelled to come here today to put this on record, to make the community aware of said challenges with the hope that they can improve and change in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you. Chair, that's my last one.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight and for sticking through the entirety of our meeting. We are moving on to item eight, which is Census Track Reports, and I have a Census Track Report for 4601. I wanted to inform the community that Tony, otherwise known as the Mayor of Pasadena, has passed away. I'm sharing some of the remembrance by Debbie Younger and Matt Madison and Holly Booth on the passing of their neighbor. When Connor shows the picture of his home, I'm sure many of you will recognize his home on Mendocino. Many of you know Tony as a friendly homeowner, gardener, and greeter who watched over a block on East Mendocino Street in vigilant fashion. Tony was given the name of the Mayor of Mendocino many years ago by Judge Eric Younger and his wife, Debbie, and Tony embraced the name with pride. Tony was born in Los Angeles and served in the United States Army. He trained as a medic in his younger years, completed specialized business studies at Pasadena City College, and was an entrepreneur. In addition to running his own business, Tony worked in the telecom sector for many years prior to retirement. In his retirement, Tony continued to run his own business, and he was an avid gardener. In fact, Tony spent most of his days toiling over his perfectly manicured lawn, poppies, irises, and potted plants while sharing his love of music with the neighbors. When the COVID-19 crisis struck, Tony decided to take his decorating skills to the next level. His patriotic Fourth of July displays were top-notch, and throughout the past several years, he enhanced his St. Patrick's Day, Easter, Memorial Day, Halloween, Thanksgiving, and Christmas displays. Tony really enjoyed making people smile as they passed by his house for viewing and pictures. Tony also had a pocketful... Tony also had a pocketful of treats for all of the local dogs. Tony was simply a stellar neighbor who looked out for his neighbors even when his own health began to challenge him. His dear friend David and close neighbors worked hard to continue to support Tony the best way we could while protecting his right to live life on his own terms. Tony also continued to frequent his favorite breakfast spot, Pete's, for as long as he could. We celebrate Tony for his, he was truly a unique and irreplaceable friend who will be deeply missed. And in honor of Tony, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, everybody, thank you for being here. Thank you again, Pasadena media.